All right, good evening. The May 16th, 2023, goodness, it's great. Pecoson City School Board Meeting is now called to order. I will call Lexi, our Student School Board Representative, up to walk us through the pledge. A moment of silence and an inspirational reading, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. For a moment of silence. Thank you. Please be seated. Good evening, everyone, and happy May. I would like to start things off by wishing all mothers out there a belated Mother's Day. My final inspirational quote for you all is, "Life is not what you alone make it. Life is the input of everyone who has touched your life and every experience that entered it. We are all a part of one another." Thank you.
Thank you so much, Lexi. Awesome job. All right, Ms. Firth, do we have any additions and/or modifications to tonight's agenda?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. And now I will call Ms. Birdy up to walk us through our recognitions for tonight, please.
Good evening, Chair Helsel, members of the board, community members and colleagues. Thank you for joining us this evening. We have two people that we're going to be celebrating today, the first of which is our own Lexi Peschanov. This marks the last meeting that Lexi Peschanov will be joining us as the student representative for the school board meeting. Although I'm not so sure that this will be the last time she steps foot into these chambers, we have seen and will continue to expect great things from Lexi, and I'm sure we will be celebrating her a lot during her senior year. I say that not to create pressure on her, but with a level of certainty with which I think we can all agree. Lexi has done an outstanding job in her role and is a wonderful example of a student engaged in the inner workings where she attends school. Her insight and probing questions this year revealed a deep understanding and ability to globally view the impact our school board has on our students, staff, and the community. Lexi, thank you for your time and dedication. Have fun this summer and good luck in your final year of high school. The May Student of the Month is an athletic young woman who has a heart for service. She has volunteered her time and talents both in her own community and abroad while maintaining a high level of performance both in the classroom and on the court. Academically, she has challenged herself with a number of honors, advanced placement, and dual enrollment courses. Her efforts have earned her a 4.05 GPA and membership into the National Honor Society. She has also been an active member of Key Club, Excel Club, and the Spanish Club. In addition to playing travel volleyball, this young lady has been a member of the Pecoson High School varsity volleyball team, where she served as team captain during the 21-22 school year, and she also has played varsity tennis. Outside of school, this student has traveled to Honduras on five separate occasions, working with Sparrow Missions to build and repair homeless shelters, help in hospitals, and teach young children. In 2022, she became certified to teach English as a second language and has taught classes to immigrants whose native language is not English. She has also volunteered to serve meals at the Peninsula Rescue Mission and has provided support to occupational and physical therapists at Riverside Hospital. When she is not engaged in her service activities or academics, she has worked at the Pecoson City Pool as a lifeguard and swim instructor. This fall, she will attend East Carolina University, where she plans to study health sciences. Please join me in congratulating our May Student of the Month, Ms. Sophie Young. This concludes my recognitions for the evening.
Birdy, and congratulations, both ladies. Next, we will move on to presentations and reports. The first one up is our instructional update with Ms. Amber Brown. And families, if you want to scoot out, we completely respect that.
I'm not going to take it personal. All right, tonight, we have a special treat for you all. We will be bringing up and introducing Mr. Casey Roberts. He is the Executive Director of New Horizons Regional Education Center. And our Regional Education Center for New Horizons was established in 1965, and it's actually owned and operated by six school divisions on the peninsula. It has a wealth of opportunities for our students, and we'll learn a little bit more about them tonight and how our Pecoson students benefit from those programs. So I'd like to invite Mr. Roberts to come on up and join me. Tonight's program, as we review it, it will fall in line with our strategic plan, our objective one, as you are aware, where this is under teaching, learning, and instruction. So we are assessing, enhancing, and expanding our meaningful programs with curriculum that consist of our real-world applications, and these are for all of our students. And we're focused on Actions 7, 8, and 9, which, of course, are focusing on vocational education, focusing on our educational opportunities and access to curriculum for everyone, and then further developing our career pathways, as well as our college and career-focused programs for our secondary students. So I'll have you take it away.
Good evening, school board members, and Mr. Tillot, and my Board of Trustee Member, Dr. Goodell. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening to present New Horizons Regional Education Center. I'll be providing a high-level look at the program and specifically looking at how your students are benefiting from this regional program. So like what Ms. Brown mentioned, New Horizons has been around since 1965. It serves the six Greater Peninsula School Divisions to include our partner over on the Middle Peninsula Gloucester, and we also serve Isle of Wight County for our Governor's School for Science and Technology. We are the largest and oldest regional program in the Commonwealth of Virginia, and we have seven specialized programs. Most regional centers in the states only focuses on one particular program, either Career and Tech, or Special Education, or Governor's School. Here at New Horizons, we specialize in everything. We are multi-campus. We have five campuses. One is located next door to Virginia Peninsula Community College. We call that the Butler Farm Campus. One in Newport News, the Woodside Lane CTE Campus, which is located right next to Woodside Lane Campus. We have a wing of Yorktown Middle School and a wing of Kill Creek Elementary that houses our Elementary and Middle School Center for Autism programs. We serve approximately 1,500-plus students annually and an additional 1,200 adult learners in the evening. Our CTE centers turn into adult learning sites in the evening. These are all the programs that fall under New Horizons' umbrella. And as you can see, we don't focus just on one, but we have seven. And I'll talk briefly about each one of these and how Pecoson students are participating in these programs. Our mission is to train and educate a competitive and future-ready workforce that is college and career-ready. If you notice, all of the specialist programs that we have, we have students that are going off to be our STEM scientists and scholars and engineers in our governor's school, and we have students that have disabilities or students that want to go into the workforce for a career tech program. So that's all we've included, having the rigor of college curriculum, but also wherever our students go when they come to us and when they graduate, they are to be community-ready wherever they may land. For career technical education, we serve 1,100-plus students. Our students apply for the programs. We have 25 different programs. We serve 23 high schools. Juniors and seniors generally come to career and technical education programs for a half-day, and the other half they spend at their home high school. Of those 25 programs, there are seven career clusters that we serve. We like to focus on New Horizons on state and national-level credentials. So we like to say that we're the Harvard of CTE. Students come to us to get those ready-to-learn entry-level state and national credentials that align directly with the world of work. Eighty percent of our students return for a second-year study. Most of our programs are one-year programs. So a student may come in junior year and take electrical. Second-year, senior, they can come back and take HVAC or plumbing or building construction. So that makes them doubly marketable to our industry partners. And then we also have a program called the Good Life Solution Program, which is our transition-to-employment program. We recently had a career selection day where over 100 students, representing all six divisions, were picked up by industry leaders. And I have industry partners, and I have a picture of that event in the next slide, a couple of slides. I also want to mention that in partnership with Pecoson City Public Schools, we're working in the early stages of putting together an early childhood cohort teacher cadet model, where you can come and mine future teachers to come work at Pecoson City Public Schools once they complete their teaching credentials in a four-year university and come back. So that's something that we're starting, and we're in the early stages of that. Here's your enrollment for 2023. You have currently 47 students that are enrolled in the seven different career clusters that are located around here. And each one of these clusters represents several programs that we have at New Horizons. Pecoson Public Schools' students represent 5% of the overall student capacity. So we have 1,100 slots, 47 students. 4% of applications received from Pecoson Public Schools are currently enrolled at New Horizons. Seventy-seven applications were received out of 1,900 applications in the beginning of the year. Fifty-five were accepted, 47 are enrolled, so that's a 71% acceptance rate. So that's very high, considering your size, and you're also in the pool with Newport News Public Schools that have 25,000 students. So over a 10-year span, this is your enrollment trend. As you can see, the dip that happened here is right around when COVID happened, and you're coming right out of the bend with 41, 49, and 47, respectively. Most divisions witnessed the drop during COVID because we had to switch to emergency teaching and learning online. And how do you teach a welder how to weld? Online. Well, we got very creative. Our instructors, one example, our welding teacher used Cheese Whiz and crackers for students to describe how welds look. So we got very creative, and we were able to get those students their credentials despite not being in the building. Most school divisions are making a comeback, and I can say for the 23-24 school year, we're over 2,000 applications for 1,100 slots. I mean, so the pendulum is swinging very close back towards vocational training, career and technical training. So the Good Life Solution Program, like I said, is a transition-to-employment program. We started that program in 2017. We've worked with 34 Good Life Solution employers that have hired 222 students across the six divisions, full-time. And full-time means full-time plus benefits. So they're coming straight out of high school with full-time and full-time benefits. 178 have completed their first year. The difference between our program and other programs is that we're just not concerned with getting students connected with employers and getting them jobs, but helping that employer retain the talent for one year. So we're a retention-based model. That's a good business model for the businesses because they're saying, "We're seeing the return on investment if you help us retain that talent for one year." So that's an 80% first-year retention rate. And if you could guess the figure for first-year retention across the nation of ages 18 through 24 in the manufacturing field, what would that be? What would you guess? Lower. Lower than 40. 29%. So when we go to businesses and say, "Hey, look, being a part of our program, you're going to get an average of 80% retention rate, where what you're currently doing, you're going to get 29." That's a win-win for businesses and a win-win for New Horizons. This is our career selection day from May 11th. It was a great day. We had over 100 students. We hit the 100-mark this year. Seven of those 110 were Pecoson students, and they were in welding, marine service technology, and electrical and renewable energy. Most of them, 30 of the 100, went to Newport News Shipbuilding, which is our largest employer, and they're our best partner that we have. They're very gung-ho about the Good Life Solution Program. The Governor's School for Science and Technology is a two-year state-gifted program. We currently have about 180 students from the six divisions in this program. There are three research strands that students apply to: engineering, biological sciences, and computational sciences. Students are then coupled with an honors and research mentorship program, where they're actively doing research with scientists out in the field. So many of our students that come to the Governor's School for Science and Technology, not only are they leaving with 30-plus college credit hours, but many of them are already walking out as published scholars with researchers in Jefferson Lab, Hampton University Proton Institute, College of Women Mary, NASA Langley, which is your neighbor down the street, and also working with some engineering firms to put together plans for the wind farm that's going to be placed on Virginia Beach. So these are just a smattering of some of the research they're doing. But when you hear them talk about the research that they're doing, this is high-level. Most of them will become your future engineers, scientists, and scholars. Most of them will go off to four-year university with full rides. Out of 90 students out of the class of 2022, I think I go back, they've earned eight-plus million dollars in scholarships and honorariums just from 90 students. So that's quite an impressive feat. And a lot of our students go off to do their PhD in their field of study. Right now, you have 13 students enrolled in the Governor's School. Generally, it's a two-year program, so we accept a junior cohort in. Six of the 13 that you have are juniors, and we received 11 applications. So out of 11, six were selected, so that's a 55% acceptance rate, which is above the average. So you're sending very highly-qualified students. Center for Autism is for students that have disabilities and have been identified as autistic. We serve K through 12. So unlike the CTE programs and the Governor's School where we're serving high school students, I have students that are as young as five and as old as 22. And I like to say also, across New Horizons, I have as young as five, but I have a maximum age of 70 in our adult ed program. So I have wound the tune, almost, in my programs. Everybody gets a kick from that. In the Center for Autism, we provide students academic training, transition skills, employability skills. Those are the things that we focus on. We want our students to be community-ready. We don't want them to just go, and the support system is lost when they're in school and they go out into the community. We want them to contribute to the community and be active citizens in their communities. We work with versatility resources, with job placement, and a lot of our students have job placements with the U.S. Navy, doing landscaping, or Newport News Airport, where they're helping with baggage and other jobs. So we are actually pushing our students out, once they've learned these skills, to apply them out in the real world. A lot of our students in Center for Autism are, they don't communicate, they're non-verbal. So I don't know if you remember the '80s toy type-to-spell, where you type in a word and it speaks it to you. It was on the movie E.T. So our students have an updated version of that on iPads. So you have a lot of our kids walking around with iPads, and they're communicating. And many of the students in Center for Autism are on track to get a standard diploma. These are students that are not just getting an applied studies diploma. Some of them are on the standard diploma track. They're passing SOLs, although they're not verbal, like a student in a comprehensive school. So we work with UNC Chapel Hill with the Universal Core Communication System. These are 36 highly-useful single words that can be used alone or in combination to communicate. And our students are extremely fluent in this new language, and they're able to communicate and progress through the program of study. Newport Academy is for our students with emotional, intellectual disabilities. Same three things we focus on: academic training, transition skills, employability skills. We work with versatility and other service agencies in our community. We also want our students to be involved, and it's sort of like an inclusion model. So our students run the Stew School Store over next door at our CTE building. It's the EFE program. They run the book fairs. They serve snacks and lunches that the CTE students at the next-door building can purchase. And even some of the students, if they apply for the current tech programs, they can attend the CTE program. So we've had students in welding. We've had students in vet tech. We've had students in pharmacy tech to participate. So it is a win-win having that regional model and six divisions have access to this high-level programming. We have a very strong PBIS program. We focus on these three expectations with our Newport Academy and our Center for Autism students: safety, responsibility, and respect. And that permeates through all of the skill attainments they're getting, even into their academic classes. So we want our students to be safe, especially when they're out working, be responsible, taking accountability and responsibility, and be respectful to each other and to others. And right now, your enrollment is seven, and that has remained consistent for the last four years. So CTE and Governor's School, you apply. But for Center for Autism Newport Academy, the divisions provide a projected number or slots that they want to have, and that's how we build the staffing model for the Center for Autism and Newport Academy. So right now, you're sitting at seven, where Hampton may have 75 slots. And that really determines, it really connects to or correlates to the size of the division, how many students you want to place there. The Center for Apprenticeship and Adult Training is the largest provider of apprentice-related instruction. So nine times out of 10, any electrician or plumber that you have called to your house to fix something in your house, nine times out of 10, they have come through New Horizons and received their instruction. So our model is based on the businesses send their apprentices to us to get the instruction in the classroom, and during the day, they work to get their OJT hours. And after a four-year stint, they will be able to sit for their journeyman certificate. So we work with over 100 business sponsors, 300 apprentices trained annually with us. And the model is, the profit margin that we make from this particular operation flows back directly into our CTE campuses, where I can use that money for equipment. So I'm able to keep our equipment in all of our 25 labs at tip-top, high-quality state. So it's a win-win for businesses and a win for us. Many of the instructors in the adult ed program are high school instructors as well. Youth Workforce is our WEOWA Youth Services Program, where we serve ages 16 through 24. These are really the students that have fallen through the cracks, that have barriers to employment or barriers to graduating. So we have a GED program. We provide tutoring. So students that are pregnant, students that are recently incarcerated that were released, students that are homeless, students that are in the foster... We provide tutoring, so students that are pregnant, students that are recently incarcerated that were released, students that are homeless, students that are in the foster care system. Those are the students we serve. We serve about a hundred and twenty students a year and we connect them directly to getting a trade and getting their high school diploma or GED. And then we plug them right into the community through work experience. So it's a very powerful system. This particular program is funded with federal dollars from the Workforce Council. And finally, out of the seven programs, we have the Family Counseling Center. Now, this is, this is one of the crown jewels that we have with mental health. Access and mental health needs are going up. Having a partnership with the College of William &amp; Mary and the School of Education, their graduate-level students are providing mental health services on a referral basis from the schools and from New Horizons for students and families to receive that mental health help and receive counseling for free. And they serve over three hundred, three hundred and fifty families a year. And so that's not, that's not based on an insurance model. That's really based on having a laboratory partnership with the College of William &amp; Mary and New Horizons through a referral-based system. And a lot of the students and families benefit from having access to this particular service. So here's some awards that New Horizons has achieved this year. So everybody's heard about the wind turbine farm they're going to put over Virginia Beach. Well, New Horizons is going to be one of the first K-12 schools to have a wind turbine placed on its campus so that our electrical and renewable energy students will learn how to maintain and build wind turbines. We want to get ahead of this because we need to have the mechanics and the technicians first before we build the wind turbines. Once they go up, who's going to repair them? And then, you know, we don't have electricity and then everything just falls apart. So we're working with Dominion Energy. We want a grant to get a micro wind turbine that looks similar to that, that picture right there. We currently have a solar panel that Dominion put on the Woodside Lane campus that students are working, they're working with and learning about. They'll also be learning about a wind turbine. My next step is to get a nuclear reactor placed on Woodside Lane from Dominion. But I probably have to go to the federal government for that. That's my goal. Next, the Governor's School won for the tenth year. The Virginia Living Top Schools and Universities. This recognizes two, a group of two hundred public and private schools serving students from preschool to graduate school through innovation and, and rigorous curriculum. And, and the New Horizons Governor's School has won it for the last ten years, so kudos to that program. Also, we've worked with Verizon. So when COVID happened, our students didn't have hotspots, especially the students with disabilities, or laptops. Verizon came in, we applied for this grant, we got the grant. They provided mobile hotspots and laptops to these students. It's all students that are a part of New Horizons. So Center for Autism Newport Academy come to us all day. So we were able to provide all of our students, including CTE and Governor's School, if they, they required a mobile hotspot, we were to provide that for free during COVID. So all of our students at New Horizons has access to high-quality, high-speed internet to act, to access that teaching and learning that we were providing virtually. And then finally, we have our Educational Foundation. We always have an annual golf classic, which is during the October timeframe. Last year, we raised forty-nine thousand dollars for scholarships and honorariums. So all of that money, barring the, the cost of putting on the golf classic, goes directly back to students that are going off to post-secondary opportunities, students that need PPE equipment to start their first job, car insurance to start their first job. The foundation provides that. And they've raised over eight-hundred-plus thousand dollars since nineteen ninety-one. So the foundation has done a fantastic job with providing that support to our students. They also provide nine thousand dollars in teacher innovation grants to teachers in CTE, Governor's School, and Center for Autism Newport Academy. And most recently, they have, they are sponsoring our Teacher of the Year program. Last year, we were able to award our first Teacher of the Year for New Horizons. And when I got there, we didn't have a Teacher of the Year program. So we started one and I like, always like to say that our Teacher of the Year program, we provide a cash reward for our teachers and a plaque and a, and a nice trophy. So tomorrow is our second annual Teacher of the Year. So we're excited about announcing our second Teacher of the Year for New Horizons. So we're excited about that. And I had a video, but I'm going to leave the video and we can pass it on unless we have time to watch the video. Okay, we'll share it. It's really talking about our Good Life Solution Program and how our, our industry partners are working with us. So I will share that with Ms. Brown as she can share it with the board and I will answer any, entertain any questions that you may have about New Horizons.
I have a question about the seven students that we send. So, well, not just the seven, but you said that we typically have seven students and that's what our allocation has been for autism, Newport Academy and the Center for Autism. Is that, do we supplement that some, in some way from the city? From Pecosin City Schools in some way?
Governor's School, Career and Tech, Special Education are all funded by the school divisions. And each one of them has a very complicated and complex equation that is put into place and it would take me all night to explain. But each division generally pays for special education services, generally pays for the slots that they want. And generally, they tell me the slots generally on the January timeframe because I have to do my budget before divisions do their budget because they have to put those numbers into their budget. So it's based on a projection. So sometimes school divisions will go over that projection and then, and then we do a settling up at the end. Sometimes divisions don't hit that projection. We do a settling up where it kind of all balances out. We may do a refund to one division. One division may have to pay more beyond their projection from the initial projected number.
I have a question. So you mentioned the swing and the pendulum back towards technical careers. Are you looking at the number of, you know, students going up? Because it looks like you dipped down for a while and then you're back on the rise. So are you looking at expanding your programs and the numbers?
Oh, yeah. We have, we have plus two thousand students. So if you do the math, over five years, I'm turning away forty-five hundred students. So, you know, I'm, I'm having those discussions or nudging our partners, superintendents of, hey, maybe a new site to absorb some of that number. And, and maybe in the maritime sector because maritime is really big.
Absolutely. We have, we have lots of areas around here. I, I know our board years ago went on a field trip with the board at the Butler Farm Campus.
Absolutely. Yes, so I'm, I'm welcoming everybody. Dr. Goodell sits on our board, so he can be more than happy to lead that charge of inviting you to visit the Woodside Lane Campus. You saw Butler Farm, or Butler Farm or both, or you went to see our campus with the students with disabilities. We're an extension of Pecosin City Public Schools. So I consider myself a part of Pecosin City Public Schools, so you're always welcome to visit. And I'm, I'm happy to give tours and answer any other questions you may have.
I just have one question. How are, how do you recruit Good Life Solution?
Okay.
Is that a formal process or?
It is. It's, it's become more, it's become more formal because we're finding, there's a little red hen, Sinjona. Have you heard of the, the story, the little red hen? She's trying to make the bread, nobody wants to help her, and then at the end, everybody wants to eat the bread. So that's why our employers are responding. They're like, well, we want this. They'll give you a list of things that they want the graduates to have and then they'll wait at the end to get it. So through the Good Life Solution Program, we ask them to put in five hundred dollars to access the talent pool. We have created a closed LinkedIn program we call Qued In where, where employers can upload employer profiles. Students can upload resumes and then they can start, that's basically a sandbox by which they can start to communicate with each other. We have career specialists and our instructors that help the employers match and fit to students based on what they're looking for and match students and parents with employers. And we work with all of those moving parts to end up with Career Selection Day. So there is a open enrollment window. After that window is closed, no other employers can come into that, that particular group. So this year, we had about twenty-seven employers that we worked with. And when everybody gets to win that, wow, we're getting all this great talent from New Horizons. Everybody wants to come in at the back end. You got to wait till the following year. So we're trying to make it an orderly process, a formal process by which when an employer is coming in saying, I want talent out of the K-12 system, they're serious about it and they won't, because we've been burned before, students have been burned, and we don't like that. Be serious. This is a serious matter. You're saying that you need all this talent. We have the talent for you. Put your money where your mouth is.
Just one, how many students from Pecosin last year were picked up through these Good Life Solution industries?
So I was going to bring a larger number since twenty-seventeen, so that's being calculated. I only picked up this year, so you had seven this year that were picked up from the Good Life Solution Program.
And presumably, more will be picked up.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Every year, as long as you're sending students to current tech programs, you're going to have Pecosin Public School students that are in the Good Life Solution Program. If you're in automotive, construction, manufacturing, IT, that's our build side. And our service side is human services, public safety, and human services.
I have a question and I think probably the superintendent should tell me. Do we have a limit on how many we send up there to them? Is there a limit? I mean, you have to form a budget, so.
There's an application process and our kids, Casey's team comes out to work with our team at the high school in the recruiting process and then kids have to sign up and then they apply. And when they get accepted, they engage that program. Our acceptance rate is, is impressive comparatively, but we are always trying to grow this program. We believe, our team believes that this is the best path for a lot of kids. And so we're in the, the throes of the, of the growing process for Pecosin. Everybody, as you saw, that same dip that you saw in the enrollment was experienced all over everywhere in all the divisions. But we're impressed with the, the very quick enrollment increase and that number, we'd love to double over time. They do have a capacity issue and that's something Casey and the board talks about often when we meet is, you know, they're, they have a limit to how many kids they can serve. And, and they use the campuses around the region, but we'd love to have one here in Pecosin. So we've been talking about that. They do have a, a marine program. You want to talk a little bit about our marine program that you started just, just a minute?
Yeah, so Marine Service Technology, we started, all of our localities hit water at some point because we're on a peninsula. So we started and I think there's only two programs in the state that are marine servicing though, that are focused on marine. However, I'm looking at other marine technology programs. Anything the shipyard is looking for, marine welding, marine electrical, non-destructive testing, metrology, you know, with new weapon systems come on, the Columbia-class sub. I mean, they need thousands of people to build these weapon systems. And these are generational platforms. So once students get plugged into it, they can have a full thirty, forty, fifty-year career on these platforms. So the, the Navy is very interested in our, in our operation and we are looking to expand capacity without changing our footprint initially. But eventually, we're going to have to look at opening a site and that site will probably be full marine, marine trades.
And how does the city of Pecosin School advertise? How, how do parents find out about this?
All through the school, just like all of our other programs. We advertise directly to parents and kids.
Follow us on social media too.
Okay.
So please follow us on all of these.
New Horizons is a great opportunity. Please consider it.
It's a great, a great thing.
I would, I would like to say thank you for what you do for our students. You know, trade school is important to me, my father being the former state director of apprenticeship and training. So it's very important. I think it, it's going to serve its purpose, but we appreciate the service that you offer to our students.
Thank you. It makes it easier with having boards and superintendents like Mr. Tillot.
I think we echo that, having your leadership at the helm has been a huge benefit to us. The last thing I want to tell you is just in comparison, when we think about students that are going out into some of our service areas, public service, students now can go and apply for, let's say, fire department and they go and they fill out their application. Our students who go to the Governor's School from New Horizons and are able to experience that program, get certifications in EMT, certifications in fire science, they get their hazmat and all these different things that make them marketable so that when they're ready to go, not only are they the most marketable candidate with experience, but they have certification that it takes typical firefighters approximately two years to get. So just impressive opportunities that we have at our fingertips. Thank you so much for taking such great care of our kids. And in advance, thank you for accepting more next year.
Send them our way.
I like it.
Absolutely. And that concludes our instructional updates for this evening.
Thank you very much and thank you, Mr. Roberts. Amazing presentations. Great to see all, all the good work and I echo Ms. Brown. We are looking forward to taking even more of our students. And next, we'll move on to the financial update with Ms. Tracy Spence.
Good afternoon. I hope everyone's doing well. This is the financial update. The first we're going to start with is the FY twenty-three budget update. The school system is currently projected to have significant vacancy savings in fiscal year twenty-three. But the budget amendment, which is coming before you tonight, appropriates a portion of the savings to the following. A hundred and thirty thousand dollars to Chromebooks, projectors, and various IT equipment. Sixty thousand, sixty thousand dollars for concrete work at the middle school. Fifty thousand dollars for a compensatory study. Forty thousand dollars for HVAC makeup hair at the elementary school. Forty thousand dollars for a gym floor renovation at the middle school. Twenty thousand dollars for, to establish the evacuation routes at the primary school. AEDs at twenty thousand dollars. Band uniforms for sixteen thousand dollars. An Aphone system upgrade at the elementary school in the amount of ten thousand dollars. And then at the middle school, four thousand dollars for library blinds. For FY twenty-four budget update, the General Assembly unfortunately has not yet approved a budget. The city approved its budget on May eighth. It's budget included, as you know, additional funding over the school's budget request, which will be used to provide another two percent compensation increase for all employees pending approval by the General Assembly. So we're still waiting to hear something to come out of Richmond. In regards to benefits, open enrollment will begin in July. The plan year is October one, twenty twenty-three through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. We're, we'll stay with the optimal medical insurance. The premiums did increase as we talked about during the budget process by three percent, which was included in the budget borne by the school system. Dental insurance is with MetLife, no change in the premiums there due to a two-year rate guarantee. So that'll be open enrollment for the employees starting in July. For the fiscal year twenty twenty-three audit, the twenty twenty-three audit plan has been reviewed with the auditors. They will begin their preliminary field work the first week of July. The school activity fund audits will begin the last week of July and the final field work will begin in September. And that concludes my presentation. Any questions?
There was a question at one point about the elementary school playground equipment. Is that, when is that included?
Yeah, playground equipment is something we look at in, in an annual basis to see what needs to be upgraded, maintained. We had a study last year, if you'll recall, we had a, an actual audit of our playgrounds to first determine, are they safe? And then determine if any of the equipment needs upgrading. We also added, if you'll recall, last year, some adaptive with this same pot of money, the carryover funding that we end up at, with at the end of the year, some adaptive equipment for our students with special needs to upgrade our playgrounds. And all of those things are in the works. Equipment's been ordered. Most of that work, as you can guess, happens over the summer because they get a lot of use during, during the day. It's hard to find times to, to upgrade. But they are on a, a normal routine basis of maintenance and upgrades.
Thank you.
What middle school concrete do we need that's out there?
There was several old pathways around the school that were not part of the project and they've been cracked. They've got, they're puddling water. They just needed some, some attention and with that project, we didn't want to leave anything undone. But there was nothing left in the funding for it since that wasn't included in the original bid. So we've tried to squirrel away a few bucks to get that done this summer. We're also putting a, a bike, we added a bike rack and there, there's no pad under that. So small things like that around the, the structure to complete that project.
Does that include the sidewalk in the front?
It does. That's what I'm speaking of. The, the old sidewalk went around the building and it was just in ill-repair. Unfortunately, it wasn't part of the project, so we've tried to fix that over, saving a few bucks this year to do it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dr. Ratliff with a operations update next, please.
Good evening, Madam Chair Housel, Mr. Tillot, and board members. Unfortunately, some of what I'm going to be going over is a bit redundant, but I can hopefully give you a little bit more perspective if you have questions on some of the things. So looking at some of the summer projects that- So looking at some of the summer projects that we're going to have coming through this year, obviously, we're going to be working on the roof at the primary school and the heating, ventilation and air conditioning at the primary school. The HVAC work has already began. The roofing work, I'll talk just a little bit more about here in just a few minutes to give you a little bit of a timeframe that we're on as we move forward with that. All of your deep cleaning takes place in the schools over, over the summer. We have schedules that have been developed by Service Master and they are ready as soon as students go out to start the cleaning process and getting everything ready to go. Any kind of routine maintenance that you can't do when people are in the buildings. Our maintenance guys work very diligently over the summer to take care of. We are in the process right now of completing the upgrades that we've done at the middle school athletic field. The last real thing that we have to bring in is the sound system and we're working on that now. I think people will be surprised when they hear the difference in what we had versus what we will have. It will be a pretty big difference. In addition, we are also adding a sound system at the softball field at the high school. It's one that hasn't really had any sound and was a pretty easy fix for us to go ahead and get that added in so those athletes can get some accolades and recognition as they're going through and playing. The softball, the scoreboard at the softball field, we've had for a while, but the problem that we ran into, as you all know around here, is the ground and how soft it is and especially when you're in the rainy season and coming out of the winter and the, the ground was not in the shape that it could handle heavy equipment for the scoreboard being delivered. So scoreboard is there and I've been working, hopefully in the coming weeks, we'll actually be able to get it installed where, where it belongs. We're also working right now, and we've been working for a while on this, on digital mapping of all of the schools. This is a technology developed actually from the military. We got a grant that covers this from the DCJS and what it does is all of the maps that are developed actually upload into all of your first responders' computer systems and such. So in the case of an emergency, they have the technology to actually talk each other through where something may be happening just by looking at a map. It's actually really neat technology when you look and see what all it can do. We are hoping, I mentioned a couple of months ago, to upgrade the food service lines at the high school and the middle school. We do have an invitation for bid out for that right now. The only prohibitive factor that I could see with that would be the timeline of getting the equipment in, but I am hopeful that we're going to be able to get that done. We are in the process of purchasing nine new AEDs for the schools. We currently have five. There's one in or around each of the nurses stations and one that the athletic trainer has. All of those are at end of life, they'll be replaced and we're also putting one in each of the gyms. An installation of an Aphone at the doors at the elementary school. So what, what the Aphone is, is that is a device that you see on the office personnel desk that when you, when the guest rings the bell to get in, it's the phone that you see that shows who's there and allows you to open the doors. The technology that the current Aphone has, it was not expandable. So all of our other scores, we have a double locking door both before and after the vestibule. This will allow us to lock both doors down at, before coming into the school and it will also expand the capabilities to have two Aphones in the office so you're not bound to one station when you're letting people in. Concrete work in front of the middle school, I won't get, Mr. Tillot addressed that, I won't get into a lot of detail, but we still, we have some concrete that needs to come up that is in poor condition. It was cracked prior to construction, it's not in great shape. We have some concrete that pulls, there are lots of issues, but the big picture of what you have with the concrete work is the whole front of the school is a little bit situated differently than it was. So right now, you're, for example, your handicap parking places are at one far end, you have to come through the sidewalks, which aren't in great shape. And if it's been raining, you have puddles of water. So we're trying to redesign that a little bit and go ahead and pull out some of the concrete work that isn't really useful anymore to direct people to the right spot in the school. Blind installation in the, the middle school library, the media center, that was something that was not included in the initial blind estimate that came through. We're in the process of, of having those installed. Repair the PE, the elementary school Aon makeup air units. We, we probably could talk all night about how this works and why it works, but essentially those are the units that in the, in the large open areas of the middle school that, that circulate the air through the school. And there are four of them and we have been having issues with three of them for some time and we are now having issues with the fourth. So we are in the process of working to try to make sure that we don't get in the shape that we're beyond repair. The middle school and the elementary school will get the refinishing that we get, that we do every year on the gym floors. The high school, we're actually going to resurface the whole floor. What happens with these floors, as you, as you refinish them each year, they, they, they continue to build up the layers of the varnish that goes on. And what's happening at the high school, it's been done so long that you're getting delamination coming up, so you're getting bad spots. They had a wrestling tournament there when they pulled the tape up, a lot of the laminate came up with it, you know, but that's just because of the shape of the floor. So essentially, what will happen at the high school is it will be sanded down to barewood, it will be repainted and then completely refinished. So essentially, it's like getting a brand new floor with that. We will be working on some additional safety updates and we're going to be working on parking lot striping. And finally, getting into the roof a little bit, so the RFP for the roof is out right now. It is due back on May 22nd. You do have an action item on your, on your, on the consent agenda for the, to approve for the superintendent to sign a contract to, with the, with the company that wins the bid from the RFP. We would like to go ahead, once we get everything sorted out, see who wins it, go ahead and get this process started so that we can make sure to meet the timeframe that we have to get that done over the summer. And that's all I have. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Big red new?
The, at the elementary school?
No, it's middle school. Who wants to say you're having problems with?
It's at the elementary school.
That's the elementary school? Are they new?
All of your heating and air at the elementary school was put in when the school was built and a lot of those units are reaching end of life. So, you know, the heating and air is a constant thing, you know, that you're working on. We have things that we work on at the high school quite frequently that need some work, but our hope is, is if we can go in and get some of these things as they're going down now, we don't get to the point where we need an entire overhaul of everything. And this is, this, these units are just one specific example and one specific thing that we know we need to get going in order to keep everything flowing well at the school. We, we still have heat and air, it's not nearly as efficient as it could be if all of these units were running.
I know what a problem it was when we, I was at the middle school and the radiators couldn't be turned on until a certain date and, you know, it's frustrating. So I'm sure there could be a little frustration about that.
You know, another point to make about these projects, including the upgrades to the heat and air unit at the elementary school, many of these projects, if you'll remember, look back to our capital improvement plan, which is really how schools deal with this. We don't have facilities money specifically. We get that from the city and it usually comes through a different process called capital improvement. But what we try to do in partnering with the city is when we have any leftover funding, we try to spin these projects forward so that we can then save that money on the capital improvement plan and in hopes move a year back. So things that we may be anticipating needing to replace next year or the year after, we may, may be able to move a year forward. It's just smart planning and Brandon has done a great job with trying to stay ahead of those things before they go bad. Worst thing in the world of having experienced that is for a chiller to go out and that's a half million dollar project that you don't have the money sitting around to pay for. So you anticipate those things as they come up and replace them before it's too late.
Question, we have a lot of activities that are non-school related using school gyms and fields. Do they all pay and then do we keep those fundings to help refurbish and?
Absolutely. That's part of the, the, the reason we charge is to try to use that money to not only pay the electricity that's used while those activities are going on, but also contribute toward the maintenance of the facilities.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ratliff.
Next, Ms. Berth, do we have any public comment tonight?
No, ma'am.
Moving to the consent agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to remove and table item C on the consent agenda until our closed session tonight for discussion of personnel matters.
I'd like to second that.
Thank you very much. Ms. Berth, would you please call for the vote for that?
Mr. Ingram?
Aye.
Ms. Childress?
Aye.
Ms. Martin?
Aye.
Everett?
Aye.
Dr. Burbage?
Aye.
Vice Chair Goodell?
Aye.
Chair, Chair Housel?
Aye.
Motion passes, vote is seven zero.
Thank you very much. Okay, so with that, I will ask Dr. Goodell to read out our new revised consent agenda for us, please.
On the consent agenda, we have the approval of financial reports, authorization to change appropriate and accept expended funds in accordance with the request, approval of minutes of April's regular and work session, and approval to authorize superintendent to sign a contract with the roofing company for PPS.
Thank you very much. Any additional? Double check. Does anybody have any questions or comments? All right. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second. Ms. Berth, would you please call for the vote?
Mr. Ingram?
Aye.
Mr. Childress?
Aye.
Ms. Martin?
Aye.
Ms. Everett?
Aye.
Dr. Burbage?
Aye.
Vice Chair Goodell?
Aye.
Chair Housel?
Aye.
Motion passes, vote is seven zero.
Thank you very much. Are there any other matters for pork consideration tonight, Ms. Berth?
Ma'am.
Thank you. Next, we will move on to communications and other matters by the school board and/or superintendent and I will.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I'd just like to say thank you to Lexi. Having worked with quite a few student representatives over the years on school boards, you, top of the list, amazing work, you're insightful. You and I've had lots of conversations over this year about things that are on your mind and, and your classmates and schoolmates minds and you articulate those things well and with passion and you're going places. So it's just been an honor for, for me personally and I know for our board to have watched you work this year as you represent school and your community very, very well. So thank you.
Thank you. Lexi, if you'll give us a school update, that'd be great.
So first, I'm going to start with the primary school. This month at PPS has been full of exciting activities such as field trip and assemblies. Some of our first graders have recently been to the children's museum in Portsmouth and some will go in June. This week, our kindergarten classes will be going to the Norfolk Zoo and our second graders will have an assembly on the life cycles from the Virginia Aquarium. Next week, the second grade students will be visiting Jamestown. We are also setting up an assembly with students to have a mobile, mobile diary farm to come and visit us. We are also looking forward to our first grader singing the national anthem at the pilot game on June 8th. Please come out and visit for a fun night. Last week, our entire staff was spoiled with treats from awesome PTO with catered lunches, a breakfast and both sweet and salty bars in our lounges. As well, we are also appreciative of families and students who took time to write notes of appreciation to our staff, whether handwritten or through Let's Talk app, thank you from the bottom of our hearts. We also continue to end the year with assessments as we prepare the year, as we prepare for our transition into next year. These assessments will help guide us with class placement in the upcoming year as well as help us focus on instructional needs of our students. And thank you to Lexi for reporting on our comings each month. And thank you. Next onto the elementary school. This past month has been a busy one at PES. Our students got to enjoy a very energetic assembly by a former Harlem Globetrotter, Corey the Dribbler. Corey shared his experiences and talked about never giving up and the importance of perseverance. He could even dribble up to eight basketballs at one time. The students loved this. We also celebrated the end of our cookie dough fundraiser with pizza lunch, limousine rides and candy and cash crawl. The students felt like, felt like celebrating riding around Pecosa in style. Mrs. Taylor's class, with the help of our wonderful, wonderful ITRT, Elista Barefoot, created a "May the Fourth Be With You" lesson on coding with Mrs. Taylor's third graders. Students coded their robots through and to the end of a maze. Students read and wrote poetry in preparation for poet Alan Wolfe's visit. Students even got to share their poetry on the morning news. Alan Wolfe's presentation was very engaging and students thoroughly enjoyed making this meaningful connection to a poet in real life. The PTO and volunteers showered our staff with treats all week for a teacher and staff appreciation week. Staff, staff were able to grab and go breakfasts, sweet treats, lunch from a food truck, salty treats and a baked potato bar. Calories do not count during this special week, right? Arts and culture night was a huge success at PES. The parking lot was full for the duration of this three-hour event. Mrs. Parker, Ms. Reed and Mr. Ramirez made this a memorable event for all families and students involved. Parents have asked that we make this special night a yearly tradition. Mr. Ramirez taught students and families alike about Columbia, his home country, through an interactive fun game of Kahoot. SOL season has kicked off at PES and has been going well due to everyone's collective effort to make testing successful. We are very busy at PES and it is hard to believe that just in a few weeks, school will be over. Now onto the middle school. May has been a very busy month at Pecosa Middle School. Teacher Appreciation Week was last week and we cannot thank our parents and PTO enough for all the support and kindness that they showed to our incredible staff. We are currently hosting our second book fair this year and all grade levels are engaging in field trips. On May 5th, sixth grade went to, on a walk-in field trip at the Pecosa Museum to attend America Goes to War Living History Exhibits. Eighth grade participated in a launch into physics program at Busch Gardens last Friday. Band chorus students are going to King's Dominion this Friday for assessments and the seventh grade is going to the Virginia Zoo on June 6th. There are also many exciting events coming up. AMS band will conduct their spring concert this Thursday at 7:00 PM and chorus will hold their spring concert on May 24th at 5:30 on the auditorium. We are busy planning our eighth grade send-off parade to celebrate our students as they end their middle school experience and head off to the high school. This occurs on Tuesday, June 13th at the PHS back loop. And finally, the high school. Pecosa High School had a wonderful month of our exciting end of year events. Prom was a success at the Virginia Living Museum, as was our 80's themed after prom. Thank you to our PTO for hosting a safe and enjoyable evening for our students. PHS launched a pilot of one, of one lunch this week and students are engaging in opportunities throughout the building from a variety of club meetings, open gym time, pickup games out back and office hours with their teachers. We look forward to gaining feedback from students regarding one lunch at the start of next week. AP testing concluded last week and we are proud of our students who participated. Students took science, math and English AP tests, are eligible for a partial refund for their testing fees as a result of our NMSI partnership. Next week will start SOL season. Students will be attending all seven classes on Monday, May 22nd in preparation for their SOLs. SOL testing begins on Tuesday and runs through Friday and students will only attend in-person days if they are SOL testing. Students will receive a list of dates they are scheduled to take an SOL test this week. Classes will be running at 9:00 and 10:40 for students to leave after their tests. PHS athletics are moving into playoff season strong and we are looking forward to celebrating our spring athletes accolades soon. Follow Pecosa High School Athletics Department on social media for the most up-to-date information with game dates and times. PHS Drama Department is presenting the spring musical, Little Shop of Horrors, this weekend with shows Thursday, Friday and Saturday evening, as well as a matinee performance on Saturday. Check out the Island Times for details and information. The spring choral concert and band concert are scheduled at the end of the month and we look forward to their performances at, as PHS is proud to be honored by the Virginia Music Educators Association as a blue ribbon school recognizing superior ratings of both our band and choral programs. PHS Chick-fil-A Academy is excited to host a fun family night at Pecosa Elementary School with Chick-fil-A, hornhole, kickball, petting zoo and face painting, four-square basketball and bingo. It will surely be a fun night for our communities. PHS would like to thank our student representative. We are so grateful for her dedication and time spent as the voice of our school, to our school board meetings. Her contribution is much appreciated at all of PHS and we value everything she does. We look forward to watching her sign her senior year. As always, please check the Island Times for the most up-to-date information about PHS. And since this is my last meeting, I would like to take a second to thank everybody here, both on the school board and behind the scenes. You all put so much time and effort into these meetings and I really just appreciate You all put so much time and effort into these meetings, and I really just appreciate how much time everybody puts into this, considering how long these meetings can be sometimes. Thank you to our technology people for your wonderful live streams of these meetings. My parents really appreciate them. To Ms. Firth and previously Ms. McKay for keeping me up to date with meet changes and always making sure I have plenty of candy over here. And then, everyone on the school board, thank you all for being just so wonderful in keeping the well-being of the students in the forefront of your minds when making your decisions. Thank you to the principals for always emailing me your wonderful updates, even if I do have to, you know, be a little pestering sometimes. I, I have good intentions. And then, a special thank you to Mr. Tillit for being such a wonderful superintendent. Your kindness is so important to me, and I truly appreciate how much you care for all of the individuals here at PCPS. So, once again, I'm honored to have served alongside all of you, and thank you for giving me this opportunity.
Thank you, Lexi. That was a great report out, and heartfelt, and we appreciate it. Mr. Ingram?
Yeah, first I'd like to thank you, Lexi, for harnessing the communication, the updates, and, and just, you know, being a, a voice for the students at all the schools. I'd like to congratulate Ms. Young, and especially for all her volunteer work that she's done. Want to thank all the volunteers for after-prom. There's a lot that goes into it, you know, from setting up to manning the booths to tearing it down. There, there's a, a lot of people volunteer for it, and just want to thank all of them for it, and one of, Roberts for providing the presentation tonight.
We're going to have a theme here. I'd like to thank you, Lexi, for all your dedication and being part of our team. Ms. Young for Senior of the Month, that's an amazing resume, and she hadn't even finished high school yet. I want to thank Mr. Roberts for his dedication to the New Horizons programs for our kids, and then I'd also like to thank the PTO for their dedication to the schools.
Martin?
Well, I, I've known Lexi for a while, and I've known she's been pretty great for a while, too, so I won't gush over you, though I'll do that, but I think she's pretty awesome. Congratulations to Ms. Young, also a kid I've been watching for a long time. Super proud of her, and just, just a small example of what we have in the school system. And, you know, it takes kids like her to get more kids involved, and it's only going to make us better as we do that, so thank you for being here, and thank you for encouraging your kids to, to help us help them. That's really the best way to make this work. A lot, lots of appreciation to the high school team. I know prom and the safety of our kids is paramount, and, and it shows, and we're very appreciative as parents to know, you know, that our kids are safe and we don't have to worry about them, so thank you from, from us on that. And then also, lastly, to the New Horizons team and to the school for providing that avenue for our kids as an alternative way to be successful with their, with their community, so I appreciate that.
Thank you. Ms. Everett?
I, I want to address Lexi. I've known you for a little while now, and you, you're extraordinary. I don't think you know how special you are, and I appreciate you. You've done an amazing job on this board, and there, there's going to be some big shoes to follow you, but good luck in your future.
Thank you.
Yes. Prom pictures, they were wonderful. I love getting on Facebook after prom, and just the glorious gowns and tuxes, and how good our students can clean up, you know? And I'm speaking of my own also. Mr. Roberts, phenomenal. Just so you know, we, we appreciate, and we know it's hard. April, once again, thank you for babysitting me. Had a few special requests this time, and April, you are phenomenal. Thank you. To the administrators, SOLs are coming up, and may the odds be ever in your favor. I know how it is, and you guys, you guys will knock it out of the park, I know you will. The teachers, same thing. May the odds be ever in their favor. We appreciate all that you do, from the top to the bottom. Let's see. T-shirt appreciation, I just probably repeat it myself. Mr. Tillit, we're happy, we're happy you're here. We're happy you're here, and I've heard that you are supporting our administrators. You're scared of what comes out of my mouth? I know you are. It's hilarious, but, but it's true, you know? They've told me that you've started showing, and I say this practically every meeting to you, empathy, empathy, and apparently, you're showing empathy. And I want to thank you for that, because it's a big deal. It's a big, and you know this from being a teacher. You know, when you have 30 kids, you can't stop. You just can't stop. So showing a little bit of empathy to our administrators and our teachers, just, you know, I see you, you know? Thank you for that. That's all.
Thank you. Dr. Burbage?
I'm going to continue on the trend here. Lexi, you've done a great job on the short time that I've been on the school board. I've really appreciated your monthly updates of, to what's going on in the school. And I'll just end it with, you've set the bar very high for the next person who's going to take your, your position, so thank you for all you've done, and I hope you have a great senior year. I look forward to hearing more about all the great things you're doing and you're going to do. I'd also like to thank Sophie Young, and congratulate, she's built an incredible resume in her time in high school, and I wish her great success as she wraps up her last school year. And congratulate her on, as she leaves Carolina University to pursue her degree in health sciences. Best of luck, and hopefully she'll stick her head back in sometime and let us know how she's doing. Lastly, Mr. Roberts, I really appreciate the update on New Horizons. It's a great program, provides a lot of opportunities for the kids in our community, and I look forward to, you know, hearing more about it over the?
Thank you. Dr. Goodell?
Also wanted to thank Lexi. I always appreciate to have questions, and they're poignant questions, and that they're involved, and you're not over there on a phone and involved in the board, so that's great. I'm kind of disappointed, and Sophie didn't put that she's our, the Goodells' dog sitter on her resume. I think that's a really good bullet point, way better than that other stuff, but no, she's, she's a neighbor of ours, great, it's such a great to have a role model to aspire to, that our whole family is, you know, breath of fresh air. And then also, lastly, with New Horizons, you know, I work on the board with Casey, and it's, it's a great opportunity, but, you know, we also have to think for our students, it's not the old vocational ed where if I'm walking out of school, I get to go over there. It's competitive applications. You have to have GPA. You have to have, you know, desire to go over there and be, not going to be a behavior issue, so sometimes there's that, this rumor of like, well, if I can't hack it in high school, I can just go over here. It's, as you saw, we're turning eight, nine hundred people away every year. Hope to keep continuing that growth, that program, and sellers for something, and get something over here, or get some home stuff, because I know our students, sometimes that commute can take.
Thank you, Grace. All right, Lexi, so I have a story. So my first year on the board, and you were probably in maybe fourth grade, our student school board representative was, and I'm sure some of you principals will probably remember him, was Brody Sebitt. For some reason, I ended up watching TV Sunday night with my husband, and we were watching Don't Laugh, Stone Cold Steve Austin. And he was doing some challenge eating food, and he goes, "I cannot eat this." Says, let me, he challenged his production assistant. So you never know when we're watching and when we're going to see you. And Brody, I believe he went on to UVA, awesome student. I say that because you have, just like everybody has said up here, you have been amazing. You absolutely have. You've blown everybody out of the water. I cannot wait to see what you do, because you're going to be amazing, and so please, you know, we're going to be watching on TV or wherever you end up, Lexi. So thank you for all you've done. Gosh, everybody, you all said it tonight, prom was amazing, everything that's going on, all the SOLs. Mr. Roberts, I just have to hand it to you, four weeks of school left, and you choose this week to start one lunch with our seniors having major senior, senioritis. That was, that was a good, well-played plan that they don't even realize. So thank you all for everything. It's been a great year. Gosh, I'm going to cry again. I told you already. Oh, sorry. With that, do we have any material for board review tonight?
Ama'am.
Okay. Well, I am going to go ahead and adjourn us, and then we're going to have a work session and a closed meeting, so thank you all.